I'm gonna move over. I think David's gonna be late.
He's not at a ten, right?
You're welcome to fill in.
Yeah, you're fine.
I'm two minutes early.
You like the separation?
How you doing?
We'll be filming these cameras up there that will film. And so we do ask when you speak, you speak into the microphones so they can get picked up. Ready everyone?
I've been on twice this year. I hadn't golfed in two years and they're the two best.
Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to this selectmen's workshop. We appreciate the response by the M-WIC and its representatives and others that they brought with them. This meeting was requested by the Select Board to better understand the project that is being proposed, referred to as Project 2015A, the Pecor Power Plant Project that is being proposed for Peabody, Mass. With that being said, Peabody obviously is a border situation to Danvers. The water's river runs behind the location of the proposed site for this plant. And with -- hi, come on in. Thank you. Thank you. And to that end, as most of you know, and in case some of you don't, 2006, Danvers was rocked by a chemical explosion in that very section of town. So we have a heightened awareness of industry, light and heavy industry in our town. We've, you know, become more diligent about, or I shouldn't say it in a manner that we weren't, but we've become very sensitive to the nature of projects that store fuel, store chemicals, and with respect to this project, the environmental impact and health impact that projects may happen, not only in town but on our border communities. So with that, when the public hearing was presented in Peabody on June 26, I went to the Board, as well as Senator Joan Lovely and State Representative Sally Karen's, attended Ansem Residence of Danvers and of the surrounding communities and of the M-WIC communities. Had questions of varied interest and varied topics and varied focus. And I appreciate that that meeting was held and in that, we asked, and M-WIC has been very responsive to come before us and talk to us about the plan. And so today's forum is a public meeting, however, it is not a public hearing. We'll introduce the M-WIC representatives and people they've brought with them to speak and offer presentation. We have forwarded them some questions that we received from the public and forwarded them on, as well as some of our own, so they could be prepared and have an opportunity to research or look into the questions we'd be asking to give informed answers now. I'm certain if there's more, they'll come back with answers if we have something new that surprises them or if we need deeper detail in that end. So today's forum will be a presentation by M-WIC and discussions with the M-WIC members, M-WIC itself and people they brought with them, experts they brought with them. And then I will open it up. We have State Senator Sally Karen's here.
She's getting a promotion.
Pardon me? I'm sorry, State Rep. We are expecting --
I thought I did something.
There we go. We are expecting Senator Lovely as well. She is on her way. We'll offer them the opportunity to speak and ask questions first in deference to their roles. We have department heads here who I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves as we go along because titles and shift and I don't want to give someone a promotion like I just did gave Sally inadvertently. Then we'll open it up to the Board of Selectmen for discussions. And again, we thank you for your responsiveness and coming here and bringing so many people who can help us and help the Danvers, the citizens of Danvers feel comfortable about the answers in the project and the plans you're presenting. So I now offer it to you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. For the sake of fluidity, I'll have, when these folks have an answer that is appropriate, I'll have them introduce themselves at the time.
Sure.
Technically, we have M-WIC staff here and a few of the light department managers from the, what we call the NEMA Zone. So my name is Ron DeCurzio. I'm the CEO of M-WIC. We've been asked to give a 10,000-foot level, if you will, of the project. So this presentation that you see on the screen should last no more than 10 minutes and then, you know, we'll open it up to questions at that time. So M-WIC, what is M-WIC? For those who don't know, it was created by a special act of the state legislature, Chapter 775, where I think one of 70 to 75, what is known as joint action agencies throughout the United States. Basically, what we do is provide power supply services to the 41 municipal light departments. And that's either through the form of membership or through project participation. Where in the past, Danvers Electric Department was an M-WIC member, they're also a project participant through the power sales agreements, or PSA's, as the acronym might be. Danvers participates in Projects 4, 5, and 6, which are the Seabrook Nuclear Station, as well as Mix 1, which is a mix of Millstone and Seabrook. They participate in Project 3 as well, which is the Millstone Nuclear Station. And they also participate in the Stony Brook Energy Center, both the intermediate and peaking plants, which the intermediate, when it was built in the 1980s, was an intermediate plant, meaning it ran in the middle of the road type of thing. But now both of them are essentially a peaking power plant, similar to what 2015A is, but on a larger scale.
So these three projects that we are participating in, we purchase power through those?
So you sign a power sales agreement, which is an entitlement. M-WIC actually is the joint owner in those because we're the ones who issue the bonds. And through the power sales agreements, Danvers gets an entitlement, a certain amount of megawatts that comes out of that power plant, or really a certain amount of percentage because they've enhanced the megawatts that come out of that over the course of time. So it's a percentage of that entitlement.
Thank you.
So Project 2015A is a 55-megawatt capacity resource, which is, you know, we try to make the distinction that it's a capacity resource, not an energy -- oh, thank you. Well, that's for you guys. So it's a capacity resource. It's projected to run 239 hours out of the entire year. There's some science that we did in order to come up with that 239 hours. So one might ask the question, if it only runs 239 hours, what's the sense of building that? Because the ISO New England, the way the grid works is each load-serving entity, like the Danvers Electric Department, is required to cover their load. And also, this year anyway, it's about a 40% increase on top of that. So that's the extra capacity, 40% extra capacity for anticipation of a very hot day or a very cold day. So Danvers has to purchase that capacity, that extra 40%. So there's a revenue for that to be ready and available when needed. So when you own an asset like 2015A, there's a revenue stream that comes in just for capacity. And when we did our economic modeling, it was based just on capacity, not on energy because the likelihood of the plant running, as you see, it's only 239 hours. So you can't count on a revenue stream for energy for that. It's got to be for capacity. So one of the reasons we selected the Peabody site was because it's in a NEMA Zone. NEMA Zone is northeast Massachusetts zone. It tends to be a constraint zone where you can't import a lot of energy for that. So it's one of the reasons why ISO looks for capacity resources in that area for those constrained days so they can ask for that unit to be turned on. There are 14 municipal light plants participating in this, similar to the other projects that I described that Danvers participates in. And the cost is expected to be $85 million. I kind of touched on capacity a little bit, but there's been a lot of conversation, why a natural gas unit? The answer to that is because renewables, because they're intermittent in nature, ISO does not give you a one-for-one capacity credit for the megawatts that it has to generate. So since 2008, everything that M-WIC has done has been on a renewable side for energy. Okay? But since you don't get the same capacity out of renewable plants, we had to go and plan for our capacity elsewhere. One of the things that we did, Danvers was not a participation in this plant, there was a fossil-fuel-fired energy plant that we owned entitlement to. And part of our plan to decarbonize, which we started prior to 2008, when we built the Berkshire Wind Project, was to decarbonize. So we decided to sell our shares in this fossil-fueled power plant and we replaced, like I said, the energy component of that with renewables. We did a Phase 1 of Berkshire, Phase 2 of Berkshire. We've done the hydro and wind contracts to replace the energy component. But because you don't get that capacity from renewables, we had to go find a source to replace the capacity from. And so looking through many alternatives and many different sites, the Peabody site was selected because it already had the infrastructure. There's very little investments that needed to be made into that site in order to make this plan happen. We'll get into batteries because there's been a lot of discussion, why not batteries? Why not batteries? And we have some subject matter experts here who can talk to the battery component of that. One last thing.
I'm sorry, Ron, as you go along and you're on a subject item, do you wish us to hold our questions till the end?
No, if you have questions during it, that's fine. Yeah, I'd like to have it free flow and so for anybody.
So to the participants who've been identified as asking questions, if you have questions during the flow because there's a specific point made, please feel free to the department heads, to the State Senator and Rep., and to the Board members. Thank you.
And I tend to talk very fast, so I'll try to be cognizant of that, but if you need me to slow down, just tell me to slow down as well. I won't be insulted.
Thank you.
So as I said, the project is projected to run 239 hours. It sounds like a lot. You know, it's expected to produce 7,500 tons of carbon. But Kate, if you can quickly go to the next page, this kind of puts it in perspective of what 7,500 tons really is. You can see that 2015A is at the bottom of the list. Most of your universities and colleges produce more carbon in multiple times than 2015A does. So does most hospitals. So when you hear 7,500, it does sound like a lot, but in context of the other generating units that's around the region, it's relatively small. And you'll hear us when we talk about the permitting process that we had to go through. Because it's only 55 megawatts, again, it's relatively small, so it's not subjected to the same type of permitting process like a footprint Salem Harbor plant would be. And the expert will go through that as well. So I hope this Page 6 really shows that, you know, what 2015A really is compared to the other producers that are out there.
Is the Salem Harbor number the revamped Salem Harbor post-reconstruction?
Yes, this 215 is the current one that's there.
Okay, current.
Yeah, that's why slash footprint.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Do you want to list the existing emissions from the two stations at Peabody right now?
Yeah, they would be below the seven.
So for those who are -- Representative Karen, because you're not on mic, I'm just going to restate your question. So the question that was asked is that the current stations in Peabody are not listed on this list, and the answer was that they are below the thresholds on this list currently. Thank you.
So the new plant will generate more emissions than the two existing in Peabody?
Combined?
Either way.
I don't believe so. Chuck, do you know what the adult knows off the top of my head?
The existing plants.
Introduce themselves, please.
The new plant incorporates.
Ed, who are you?
No, it's on. It's on. We just need to.
My name is Ed Kozinski. I'm a retired director from M-WIC, and I'm currently functioning as a consultant for project development. The new project, this new unit incorporates what they refer to as best available control technology. So this new unit emits far less emissions than the two existing units at Peabody, which are much older. This is a much cleaner unit.
So what are the two units of Peabody emitting?
We don't have that information right here, but they're smaller units and they would be comparable to that unit. They certainly wouldn't be high on that list because they're very small. Unit 1 is less than 20 megawatts. Unit 2 is less than 40, so during the summer months. So they're small units, small emitters. This unit is larger. It's about the size of the two of them put together, but it emits far less emissions because of its advanced emissions control technology.
But you won't take off the other two. Those will continue, right?
Hi, my name is Chuck Orfanos. I'm the manager of the Peabody Light Plant. To address your question specifically, in 2019, the carbon CO2 equivalent emissions total between both our plants was less than 2 tons. So, you know, they're talking seven here. In 2020, the total is 3.1 tons. So again, that was for both units combined.
And this will be seven?
Yes.
All set?
Ed, you might as well keep it because Page 7 is about the noise.
Okay, I can talk to the noise. One of the requirements that we had to go through in our air permitting process is we had to go through a very extensive noise analysis. Noise is considered an air contaminant by the Massachusetts DEP. So we had to put receptors up, five receptors in Peabody. We had to put three in Danvers, Bates Street, Broad, and at the hospital, Massachusetts General Hospital, all had receptors where we had to do analyses. And then we had a model. When we modeled, we had a model, the noise emitted by all three units running simultaneously, the two existing Peabody units and the new unit. And the state requirement is that the sound pressure, or the sound intensity, I should say, cannot exceed the quietest times during the day by more than 10 decibels. That's the state requirement. We achieved less than 7 decibels at the closest residences in Peabody, which are much closer than the Danvers residences. So we were less than seven. We were actually at six with the model in Peabody at the closest residence. And in Danvers, the highest intensity increase you had was three. I think it was three at Bates, two at Broad Street, and one at -- no, I'm sorry. But it was three, two, and one, Bates, Broad Street, and the hospital. So you were far less than the locations in Peabody, and you were much, much below the state requirement, which is 10. The highest increase with all three running in Danvers would be three.
So if I can reexpress that for the citizens, what you said, which is at 2:00 in the morning, if the average, if the sound profile is a set number, I'm going to make up, I don't even want to make up a number, but it's 2:00 in the morning, it's very quiet. If all three of those plants had to fire off at 2:00 in the morning because it's an extremely hot night and you need the peak of power, you'd only be raising it less than 2 or 3 decibels in the surrounding neighborhoods in Danvers. Okay?
That is correct. The requirement is that your increase in intensity has to be above what they call the 90%, which means that 90% of the time, the noise, the background noise is higher. This is the quietest 10% of the day.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Yes, Sally, Representative Karen.
Does that mean that there is background noise? For what percentage of the time is there existing sound, but the 10-decibel level pertains to an increase? In other words, is it quiet all the time? You mentioned background noise. Is that a constant?
No, it's 10 decibels above the quietest period, which means that if you have a higher period, if you have a higher noise period during the day, it would be less.
So is there noise all throughout the day?
Yes.
Constant?
Well, it's not constant. No, that's why they measure it on a time, over a time, to determine the quietest period of the day. And that is the baseline from which you, your sound intensity increases. Okay, National Ambient Air Quality Standards. The National Ambient Air Quality Standards are standards for criteria pollutants that the EPA feels will affect public health and public welfare. The Massachusetts has adopted those same standards. They're called the Massachusetts Ambient Air Quality Standards. And what they look at is they look at criteria pollutant like NOx. What's NOx? NOx is ground-level ozone, smog. They look at sulfur dioxide, acid rain. They look at ozone, upper atmosphere. They look at lead. They look at particulate matter, which causes respiratory issues. They look at pollutants that cause or affect public health, public welfare. The process we went through required that we do a model on cumulative emissions, these cumulative criteria emissions. And what do they mean by that? They mean that the models were done based on running all three Peabody units simultaneously. The closest point sources, Salem Harbor or Footprint, Willibrater Saugus, GE Lynn, and they also added into that background or ambient pollutants. So the cumulative was the sum of all of those. And when they included all of those, which is realistic, which is the right way to do it, we were below the national and the Massachusetts Ambient Air Quality Standards. But that was the degree of thoroughness that we were subject to by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection.
In this case, below the standards, actually.
No, we appreciate that that's the case. Senator Lovely, please.
Thank you. Is that in a, or in some part of environmental impact report or a health impact assessment report? Is that in a report, those findings?
That is in our non-major comprehensive plan approval, which is a public document with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Okay, it's basically the air permit, if you will.
But there isn't a report.
It's contained within that document, which is a very lengthy document, but it's within it.
But I just want to make, distinguish the difference between what is in, you know, on the website in the permit, the air permit, distinguish it between that and an environmental impact report. They're separate, correct?
Well, they look at environmental impact report, we went through a form of that in the MEPA process. It's all encompassing. This looks at air only. This looks at air and noise. Do you want to answer?
Yeah. My name is Nick Scoboe. I'm the attorney for M-WIC on this project, and I have been involved with permitting power plants and regulations for a very long period of time. To answer your question specifically, Senator, under the CMR and under the general laws, if your plant is 100 megawatts or above, two things happen. One, you have to file an environmental impact report. That's one. And two, you have to go to the EFSP or the Energy Facility Siting Board, which is precisely what Footprint had to do because it's above 100 megawatts. Under the CMR, the Code of Massachusetts Regulations promulgated by the Department of Public, you know, excuse me, DEP, if you're under 100 but above 25, the first thing you have to do is file an environmental notification form or an ENF. That is not an environmental impact report under the law, okay? Because there's a cutoff, there's thresholds. And when you file for an ENF, which M-WIC did in 2016, one has to, it's a fairly extensive filing, and you have to show all your alternatives. You have to show what the plant would emit of the criteria pollutants that Ed mentioned. And there are thresholds in the CMR for MEPA. The ENF goes to MEPA, which is the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act Office. And as soon as that gets filed, MEPA publishes, not as soon as, maybe a couple days afterwards, publishes the environmental notification form in the environmental monitor, which, as you know, is published on the state website and it's left there for 30 days. The purpose of that is for anyone who wishes to comment can comment on the ENF. The second thing that is required under the ENF, under CMR, under the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, is that M-WIC is, you're obligated to notify state agencies that may have an impact or something which MEPA wishes to hear potentially in its analysis of the ENF. So M-WIC filed with the ENF with 12 state agencies. I know it says 10 in here, but it was actually 12. And it also had to file with city of Peabody agencies. It is not required to file with Danvers. And the reason is because the way the regulations are set up and because it is a 55-megawatt plant, not 100-megawatt plant, it was not required to do that because the emissions are not as great. That doesn't say that in the CMR, but that's what's behind the theory. But when filing the ENF, it also has to indicate But when it, when filing the ENF, it also has to indicate where MwIC's, where the output of the plant lies at MIPA thresholds for NOx, for CO, and so on and so on. And in each and every instance, it was below. And the Secretary of Environmental Affairs ultimately takes into account any public comments coming from the, from the Environmental Monitor, any comments from state agencies, as that term is defined in CMR for purposes of the MIPA process, and any comments from the city agencies. In addition to that, the MIPA office held a public hearing at the site. It is required to do so, it did so. And that hearing took place in 2016, in September of 2016. The notification for that hearing was, was required to be placed in a local newspaper, which it was by MwIC, inviting the public to come to that particular hearing, held by the, I'm not sure what the official title is, but the person from MIPA who's in charge of, of addressing everything. At the conclusion of all of this, and at the conclusion of any comments, the Secretary of Energy has a choice. The Secretary of Energy can determine whether environmental notification form, excuse me, whether a environmental impact report is required or not. And what the Secretary determined was, based on the analysis and based on the information presented, based on the fact that no state agencies provided comments, nor did any city agencies, the Secretary of Energy determined that there was no need to file an environmental impact report, as, as required by CMR. In addition to that, the Secretary did say, but you have to get, and it's obvious, a, shorthand it to an air permit, which is what Ed was talking about before, the non-comprehensive plan.
So I'll let the Senator finish, and then our Health Director.
Appreciate that, thank you. So I understand that the Health Department in Peabody issued a letter to the Governor this week requesting that environmental impact report. Is that, is it too late to ask for that? Is that comment period gone, or is that appropriate?
I think, in my view, it's too late. I did see that, I saw the letter, I haven't studied it. But the Health Department was in fact notified, as required under the CMR in 2016, for purposes of any input at that time.
Is that when the project was referred to as Project 2015A? And wasn't that only advertised in the Peabody weekly paper, also formerly known as the Shopper's News?
That was for the public hearing, which is.
The hearing was advertised?
It was, it was advertised in the local weekly paper, as required, number one. Number two, a notice was sent, not, not from the newspaper, but a notice was sent to the Health Department pursuant to CMR under the MIPA process.
I just wanted to add to that. It was not referred to, in all of the notifications and in the publication, it was not referred to as Project 2015A. It was not. It was referred to as the MwIC Simple Cycle Gas Turban Project.
I'm going to let our Health, our new Health Director ask a question. Before I do, I would ask a question. At the public hearing on June 22nd, you introduced some, some modifications, some, some thoughts about modifications to the, not to the fuel being used, that was still going to be natural gas and oil as a supplement to that. And I'm sure you're going to get, I'm sure you're going to get to that and understand that. But you did talk about recent changes that the representative initiated, as well as the consideration of nitrogen scrubbers, which would change the NOx profile. Do changes in the plan that were presented in 2016 require then a reevaluation of whether the, the environmental study is, is needed, because you're actually, in fact, offering changes to what you, what was presented in 2016?
No, there's no changes. The, when we petitioned the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the project and the air permit, we asked that they give us the option of utilizing two, one of, either of two NOx reduction agents. One is aqueous ammonia, the other is urea.
Yep.
Both can, both will reduce ammonia, both will reduce NOx to the levels that are required in our permit. We're required to reduce NOx to 2.5 ppm, which is best available control technology. The, so we have the option in the permit to go either way, as long as the output would exit, the gas turbine in the exhaust does not exceed 2.5 ppm NOx.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
The aqueous ammonia required, I'm sorry.
What is, explain NOx, is that the word?
Yeah, that's nitrous oxides. They are a byproduct of, of a combustion reaction. And NOx, the reason why it is so stringently regulated, NOx is the primary source of what we refer to as ground-level ozone. Not the ozone in the upper atmosphere, but ground-level ozone, which is basically the primary constituent of smog. That's why it is, that is why it is so, so stringently regulated by your Departments of Environmental Protection. So we had the two options. And we recently said, okay, aqueous ammonia has, it's, first of all, it's a hazardous substance. If there's an accidental release, you would have noxious fumes. We had to go through an extensive modeling of these fumes in our air permitting process. So we recently made the decision to go with urea, which is non-hazardous, there's no thresholds established by OSHA, and the facility, the generating facility in downtown Boston, the medical facility was at MATEP, they utilize urea. Why? Because they're in downtown Boston, they have NOx scrubbers, and we're going to use urea here. We're in an industrial location, but it is the safe way to go. There is no chance for any noxious fumes. So we're going with urea.
So when you made the permit, when you applied and went through the process, you had the option of urea or ammonia?
Yes.
And either one would be fine?
Yes.
However, you did introduce, the evening of the, of the June 22nd, the potential of using nitrogen for cleaning the equipment, the Misabichi equipment, as a potential, as a potential additive, or a potential change. Does that change the profile?
I, I think what we did is we, we, we said that one of the, one of the byproducts of blending hydrogen was an increase in NOx in the actual combustion process. But that is internally within the generator, within the turbine. The exhaust is, has not changed at all. We should, we should not even have mentioned it because it confuses things.
It did.
It confuses things.
Obviously.
There's no change in the NOx. When you look at the generator, you look at the exhaust, the NOx is limited to 2.5 ppm, no matter what we're burning. That is our permit. So that, that, that was just, that confused the issue. It, it just requires that we put more NOx reagent when we, in order to abate the NOx. That's what it requires.
So the Select Board members are all members, citizen members, we have the professionals, and so some of our questions will be learning questions as well. But at this time, I'd like to introduce our new Health Director, Ade Salari, and, and for his comments and questions.
Hello, my name is Ade. I just have a quick question. If we combine the megawatts generated by the other two plants with the 55 megawatts from this proposed new plant, does it exceed 100 megawatts? And does that automatically trigger an environmental impact assessment?
If you combine the megawatts, it could trigger above 100. The answer to that is no. And the reason is because both the MIPA statute, the DEP, it's 100 megawatts from one, one unit. In, in this set of circumstances, of the three units, two are run and controlled and owned by the City of Peabody, operated by the Peabody Municipal Light Plant. The 55 megawatts is owned and operated by MwIC. So they're not the same. And that, it's, it's, it's not considered to be under the same control. I can't remember the exact technical term, but in essence, it, the 100 megawatts would have to be under the same entity controlling all 100 megawatts, and that's not what's happening here.
So what is the total combined anyways?
55, 20, and 40?
Those are winter readings.
Yeah, okay.
All right, go.
If you wanted to do, there's nothing that says you can't do a comprehensive health assessment or a comprehensive environmental impact review. So I guess I'm listening and wondering, will you do that? Will you pause it long enough so that we can get more information and be more confident?
A comprehensive environmental review, in my opinion, was undertaken. What you're referring to is an environmental impact report.
Correct.
Okay? Number one. Number two, the comprehensive health impact is a federal requirement, not a state requirement. All right? And this doesn't fall under the federal, under the federal laws.
I'm asking, would you do it?
Having said all that, having said all that, your question is, would MwIC voluntarily undertake, undertake doing that? I don't think so. I think because MwIC has followed every single requirement, every, every regulation, every law, everything, as, as, as best it can, and has proceeded along those lines. So I don't, I wouldn't recommend it to my client, no.
That's a different question.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
That's a different question than what I'm asking.
Then I misunderstood your question. I thought you said, would we voluntarily undertake it?
Well, as a lawyer to a client, perhaps, but in the interest of greater public confidence, particularly for us, where we weren't part of any of the prior input process. So why not do it?
Because I don't think it's required, I don't think it's necessary, I think the law doesn't, doesn't allow it. That's, that's my view of it.
So I, and I appreciate that you've been taking questions as we go along during your presentation.
I would just like to.
If you want to get back to your presentation, you're welcome to, and we'll, I don't want to, I don't want, I, I invite questions as the subject matter comes up. I'm sure we'll have more. So if, at the point that you want to get back to your presentation field, let us out. But Select Board Member Duggan has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you to MwIC for coming this morning to participate in this workshop. It's unfortunate that it's taken several years, and we've, I feel like it's in the 11th hour now. I just have a question about the smokestacks. So we have several neighborhoods that are in the, within three-quarters of a mile, there's dozens of homes in Danvers, in close proximity to the plant, and they're concerned about what comes out of that smokestack. So you talked about the urea. Is that primarily used with the diesel to break down the exhaust components of the diesel exhaust? Is that, is that its purpose?
It's, it's the same principle, because they use that in, as you know, in large trucks. They have converters for NOx. It's, it's used, regardless of the fuel, whether it's natural gas or diesel, it's used to mitigate the NOx, and it converts the NOx to water vapor nitrogen. So they're, it basically eliminates the NOx.
We talked, you talked about the gas and the diesel, so I recall that initially you were planning on two, 200,000-gallon tanks, that was for the oil. And then I see recently that you eliminated one of the tanks. Is, is the gas the primary fuel, and then diesel is just sort of a backup?
Yeah, let me, let me just clarify one thing. The original plan, originally, we said, okay, we're going to replace one of the 110,000-gallon tanks with a 200,000-gallon tank. We have since decided that we're not going to change anything. We're not going to install a 200,000-gallon tank. The tank farm that exists, the capacity of that farm will remain unchanged. The primary fuel is natural gas, yes. Diesel is only the backup.
Okay. And from, from a neighborhood perspective, is there any odors that are coming out of the smokestack? I assume natural gases burns a lot cleaner, but for the, the diesel and the urea, is there any type of odor that would permeate the neighborhood?
Not that I know of. You know, I've been working with power plants for 50 years, and I'd have to say no.
All right.
The stack is 90 feet above grade, and it, it's 90 feet for a reason, because it has to be that high to contain all of the air pollution control equipment. And secondly, by being 90 feet up, it also assists in dispersing the emissions, so that they're not concentrated dispersed.
So even in a temperature inversion, that wouldn't be forced down to ground level? You're, you're assuming that it's going to dissipate into the upper atmosphere?
I, I'm saying that the, all the modeling that we did, which is EPA-approved modeling for these types of weather conditions, indicate that any, whether it's an inversion or any type of anomaly, is not going to reach the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. This is what we were held to. And this is, this is like, as I mentioned earlier, this is cumulative, not only from the, the stack, the other two units at Peabody, three major units in the area, plus background.
Okay. And then just one last question, because we're on the topic. For the natural gas, what's the, where are you sourcing it? Because there's two major gas pipelines that are just across the river. Are you going to tap into those, or what is going to be the source?
We're, we're tapping into a gas, a gas pipeline that's owned by the City of Peabody.
I see.
It's a short gas pipeline that interconnects to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline on the Beverly Line, under the river. That's where the connection is. And that line is the Tennessee Gas Pipeline owned by Kinder Morgan.
Right. And so you wouldn't require any kind of compress, compressing unit to?
Okay, yes. We are onsite, we are going to have an electric motor-driven compressor. Well, let's, let's just clarify one thing. This is not the same as a compressor at a natural gas compression station. Those compressors use gas turbines. Those compressors emit. This will not emit anything. It's nothing more than a motor driving a compressor to maintain a constant pressure at the new gas turbine, okay? That's all this is doing, is maintaining a constant pressure for combustion stability, for emissions controls at the gas turbine.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that information, I appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Afterwards, sorry, thank you. So from one of our local town meeting members, her research says gas line pressure must be maintained at 1,260 pounds per square inch. Is that a correct statement?
No, we, we, I saw that in the question, and the question referred to the M&amp;N Pipeline. That's, that's the pipeline that comes around from Nova Scotia through Maine.
Yep.
That, that's not the same pipeline, that's number one. Number two, the maximum allowable operating pressure on the City of Peabody Gas Pipeline is 750, not 1,300. And the pressure fluctuates between 300 and 700 pounds. That, because of that fluctuation, that's why we have to stabilize it for the new unit. But that is, no, that's not the pressure, the pressure is, again, the highest pressure we have is 700 pounds coming onto the site.
Great, thanks for clarifying that. So that means you don't need an enhancer station of any type?
Any what?
Enhancing?
No, no, not at all.
Not at all. Okay, great, thank you very much.
And I do appreciate, so obviously, we, as the elected officials have questions, but the, the people in the area also have these questions, so I appreciate the details you're offering. It helps provide answers that they need as well. And thank you for the, offering those details, knowing this is a existing gas pipeline through Peabody, and why you need to have, you know, because I've read, I read everything on the project2015a dot, whatever it was, com or org site, and that was in the frequently asked questions. I will say, a comment I'll offer is, based on even the Senator's questions and, and the Representatives' questions, trying to find the actual DEP filing in details is, is daunting for people who don't do this all the time. So whether you can provide a link to those, only so that, it, it, it's out there, it's public information, but if you can help, it would be helpful to understand how to get there. Now I have to go search DEP and try to figure out what the name is and where they buried it in their websites, and so on and so forth. And that's not your issue, but a link would certainly be helpful to, to. And that's not your issue, but a link would certainly be helpful to point us in the right direction so that we can assuage some of these questions.
My name is Joe Koalik. I'm the General Manager of the Municipal Light Department in Marblehead. And if you want to get a copy of the DEP final approval permit, you can get it from our website under the Project 2015A tab. It's on the main page.
Thank you.
It's a 59-page document, so I would recommend taking a look at it and seeing, you know, really the contents of it.
Thank you. Questions from the board members about where we are in the presentation? Or... Oh, I'm sorry, our health worker had another question, I believe.
Through the chair. This plant is expected to run fewer than 239 hours per year. How did you come up with that number? Is this clearly stated on your permit? How is this enforced? And what will be the protocol if circumstances require you to exceed the number of hours permitted?
We looked at the annual operating hours of the two existing Peabody units that are both peaking units on that site. We looked back six years, and we took an average. And I can tell you, it's been trending down. Last year was very low. So we said, okay, let's be conservative. Let's use the six-year average and not follow the trend. So it was conservative, because it has been trending down. I think last year it was 74 hours, the maximum run of one of their units. So we took the average of six years. Yeah, the reason why the permit was permitted for 1,250 hours, 1,000 hours on gas and 250 on oil, is because when you go through the permitting process, you go through the maximum contingency that the unit may see in its lifetime. And at the time, this was something that was gone back and forth between us and the state, and 1,250 seemed reasonable. It offered a lot of cushion. But then after we looked at the actual trending in the past six years, we can say with a lot of confidence that it's a lot more than we're going to run. But that's typically... When you apply for a permit, you typically apply for a large contingency, if they'll give it to you. It's up to the state whether they give it to you or not.
My name is Matt Hyde. I'm the Executive Director of Energy and Financial Services. In addition to what Ed was talking about, there's some additional limitations that the plant is subject to under a regulation called 310 CMR 7.74. And that's where the plant is obligated to go through an auction process that the states put up to essentially procure air allowances, which allow it to essentially emit. And we do have limitations under that process as well. Our modeling, as far as this plant's running in the market as a reserve plant, as a peaking plant, indicates to us that we will have a lot of room inside this air allowance limitation, but we do also have this additional limitation that the plant has to abide by.
I don't see any other questions at the moment, so if you want to continue on with your presentation, you may be answering some questions before we get to them.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Selectman Mills, Select Board Member Mills.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. May I apologize to everyone for being late, and I have no excuse other than the weather. My name is David Mills. I live across the street, and I'm a member of this board. I've also been active in state and local government for 50 years, and I have been a lawyer for 52 and a half years, and I have represented proponents, opponents, very rarely a neighborhood group. That was not my deal. But I noticed some 15 or 20 years ago, it became the custom of proponents being willing to provide the funding so that the municipality that was being affected could retain its own expert in order to do a very conscientious and prompt and efficient review of the documentation and the basis for the proposal, and to address the concerns of ordinary citizens about safety of something like this coming into our neighborhoods. Now, I've heard about a 59-page... Listen, I've been around. I've attempted my whole life to understand what government does at several levels, and I still am a failure at that. To expect some widow on Chase Street in Danvers to have confidence that we are doing our job as a select board, even though we may not have any regulatory authority, to be asking you, as you have done come this morning, has any... In the half an hour that I missed, has there been any discussion of the feasibility of asking these proponents to fund for the benefit of the townspeople? Environmental study, we can't afford to do that. But it really should be done so that everything that you say can be just rubber stamped by people who are totally independent to say, this makes sense, and this is good. Because behind all of this, I am a believer that the owner of land and that the owner of government has a right to do with its land and to service its people the way it chooses to do it. At the same time, I am a believer that there is no reason why everybody involved in the process cannot be comfortable and confident that complete study has been given to something that brings fear to... I'm old. I'm in the old minority. I'm almost 79. And the people that I hang with in this town are not sophisticated scientists, and when they hear a 59-page report of DEP... DEP is scary enough to many of them, and to many of you, and to many of us through the years. It's just not that easy for my constituents to understand and have confidence that we have done our job, that you have done your good job, and that the answer's around. So I don't know if you've talked about that before I got here, the funding by the proponent of independent studies for the benefit of the people in Danvers.
So before you joined us, Select Board Member Mills, we did talk about the permitting processes that were required based on thresholds of the output of the plant. 100 kilowatts requires a certain threshold. 25 to 100 requires another threshold of requirements and studies and filings, and below that is different. The question about what they had to file was offered and answered, and State Representative Kerns offered a question that, while not required, what would be the opportunity to do more environmental impact study, which is different than the studies they provided and did under the structures of that, of those legal thresholds of being between 25 and 100. So I'm going to defer the question you've asked. I think they've offered some answers, but I'll defer the question you've asked till the end, when we do some more open-ended question and answer period. At this point, we're walking through the presentation they thoughtfully prepared for us, so we can ask pointed questions as we go through it. And at the end, we'll all have an opportunity to offer more thoughts and considerations.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? If you'd like to move on to your presentation. Thank you.
So the next slide is the timeline. I don't know if that's important, but we often hear that because it's...
I'm sorry.
We often hear because it's labeled 2015A, there's a theory that this has been around since 2015. In 2015, as part of our responsibility as a joint action agency, is to look at power supply from the energy standpoint and the capacity standpoint. So in our efforts to rid ourselves of that fossil fuel energy plant, we had to find replacement capacity. So we went to the board in 2015, asking for some research and development dollars, if you will, to find a suitable location. So through much work by my engineering staff and my power supply staff, in 2017, we were at a point where we asked the municipal light departments, upon our recommendation, who should take part of this capacity unit. We had them sign the power sales agreement. So in essence, we really didn't commit to that until the power sales agreements were signed in early 2017. So from 2017, we submitted... Matthew Hyde explained real quickly that we have to, through the ISO auction process, bid this unit into the auction. We were successful getting accepted into the auction on the second time around in 2018. So that's when the clock, with all of this really development and going to the permitting process and getting it all finalized, really, really started. Currently, we are waiting on the DPU. Part of our requirement is, when we issue bonds, and I didn't state this earlier, EMWIC through all those projects, you know, we talked about Stony Brook, we talked about Millstones, we talked about Seabrook, we've issued over $5 billion of debt, you know, through Wall Street, and the DPU has given us that approval to issue that debt. Just a little side note, we currently have no debt outstanding. We're AA-rated. So right now, we're at the stage of going through the DPU process to get that approval for the $85 million for the initial funding, and then we're also asking for $85 million for the potential of refunding that initial $85 million if interest rates should dictate refunding. So you ask for the both dollars upfront, because you don't want interest rates to move away from you. You want to be able to access the refunding as quickly as possible. So we ask for that refunding money at the same time. Just one... You had a few questions on battery storage as well, so we put a few pages in, and Matt and I are going to address that.
Again, my name is Matt Hyde. I'm the Executive Director of Energy and Financial Markets for EMWIC. So we did, as part of our ongoing due diligence, look at the possibility of having a battery storage facility on that location. And I think the first thing I'd like to kind of mention is, in the discussions that we've had with a lot of people, a lot of people look at the technology as essentially from a capacity market perspective to be equal, so that it's really, do you use this technology, or do you use this other technology to essentially achieve what we're trying to achieve as a capacity hedge? Unfortunately, it's not as simple as that, because when you're talking about certain technologies, while they both provide capacity, and they both provide capacity in the ISO New England forward capacity market, the characteristics of that capacity are different. And with 2015A as what they call a dispatchable resource, we have the luxury of running when the system needs us, to run at a very long duration of time if the system needs us, versus a battery, which right now, with the current technology, the batteries can only dispatch between two and four hours. When this plant runs in the capacity market, it is not the decision of EMWIC essentially to run that plant. It is the decision of ISO New England to dispatch it based on needs of the system, where they need capacity to come online. So in both cases, we're waiting essentially for a dispatch signal from ISO New England that tells us that the system is in tight balance between supply and demand, and they need additional supply to turn that generator on. Our studies have shown that when we expect, on those rare occasions, that ISO is going to dispatch this unit, it is more likely going to want to dispatch this unit in an increment longer than four hours, primarily during the wintertime, during a cold snap, or during the summertime, during a prolonged heat wave. So when we have to take that into consideration when we're kind of looking at the technology, because if we believe that the need for the capacity, especially at this location, is going to be in increments that are longer than four hours, we have to take into consideration the characteristics of the technology that's going to deliver that capacity. And right now, unfortunately, where a utility-scale battery storage is, at best, we can rely on that technology to dispatch electricity for a four-hour range, which we believe is going to be inadequate for some of the capacity needs that ISO is going to be asking us to generate. So that, I think, is a very important point, as then we kind of dive in and essentially wave our magic wand and say, forget what I just said, and pretend that the capacity is essentially equal, and pretend that if there's any kind of space limitations on the site, which there are, they don't exist, run the economics to see if the battery storage on that site makes sense. And unfortunately, the battery, in our modeling, the battery storage is almost twice as expensive as Project 2015A and its technology. And it is true that battery technology is getting cheaper as the technology matures and develops. But because of that difference in the characteristics that I just kind of mentioned, economically, the battery can't take advantage at the Peabody location to certain things in the market that the technology that 2015A is currently designed can. And those additional markets, like the forward reserve market, which is a market where ISO New England pays us additional revenue on top of capacity to be ready when needed, we cannot avail ourselves to that with a battery. But we can avail ourselves to that revenue with the technology of the gas-fired and oil-fired turbine. So this additional revenue stream is a very important consideration economically, why it drives the cost of 2015A down vis-à-vis the cost of a battery.
So if I just might paraphrase, what I'm hearing you saying is, the peaker plant is available to run for longer hours than the capacity of batteries to provide that energy. In the event if it's more than four hours, you will have drained the battery capacity for the need it's had, but the peaker plant could run for eight or 12 hours if needed on demand?
Yes.
Okay. Selectman... I'm sorry, Representative Kerns.
Another promotion.
No, not the selectman. I'm not sure that's a promotion.
You've talked about battery storage at the Peabody site and capacity need and the revenue that ISO will direct to, I guess, to EMWIC for hosting, for lack of a better term. Can you meet capacity demands without using that site? If you could get battery storage, oh, I don't know, somewhere else, would that work? Can you meet your capacity needs without building this plant on that site?
System-wide, if I was down in Holyoke at ISO, system-wide, you can make a case you don't necessarily need this plant at that location. But that's not what the plant is designed to do. The plant is designed as a capacity hedge for municipal light plants who have to purchase capacity. In addition to that, there are certain communities that are inside of certain capacity zones in the eastern part of Massachusetts, whose the price of that capacity is going to be determined by the price of capacity in this region. So another very important reason why the siting of this plant was important is that for those eastern Massachusetts municipal light departments who are going to have to buy capacity, this plant is going to be generating capacity at the same cost that they're going to have to buy it, and that's essentially creating this hedge. So it's... In the aggregate, do you need 55 megawatts coming from Peabody for system reliability? Probably not. But if you're using this as our light departments are using it as a capacity hedge, it's very important, especially for the eastern Mass... Light Departments, that this plant is located in Peabody, because it's going to get paid the same amount for capacity that those eastern Massachusetts light departments are going to have to pay for. And it equals out, and that's where the hedging comes in.
So when you refer to hedge, you mean economically, price-wise?
Yes.
It's about saving money for...
It's about...
So do those savings accrue on municipals or just the investors in this?
No. To the ratepayers of the municipal light departments who are participating in the project.
Okay, so that's not Danvers?
However, I could extrapolate a bit. Danvers also has to pay for capa... Danvers also has to pay for capacity. So, in this particular case, if that plant is in Peabody and is contributing capacity in Peabody, when the forward capacity auction determines the price of capacity for the region, and we are providing additional supply, which hopefully puts downward pressure on capacity prices, then the residents of Danvers, who are customers of the Danvers Municipal Light Department, are also going to benefit from that, because the capacity has to be procured by Danvers, and then that gets passed on to the Danvers residents.
Yeah, but we buy our capacity.
Yes, and you're buying at the market, and this, this, this...
Right, so there's price, and then there's health. And so, it's weighing those, so, the meeting of capacity demand can be done without building this third plant?
In the aggregate, the answer is yes, but when the answer, I think the answer was, or the question was, what is, does this benefit, by building this plant in Peabody, does this benefit the residents of Danvers? And my answer was, it does, because it has the ability to bring the price of capacity that Danvers has to purchase down. And it just happened, in this last forward capacity auction, that the price that Danvers has to pay for capacity from the market, which you refer to, is much higher than other customers who are outside of this eastern zone had to pay for their capacity if they were from Worcester or Springfield. And this is what we call zonal separation in capacity prices. And this project located in Peabody is one of the reasons why we wanted to cite it in this eastern part, to try to create a situation where you don't have zonal separation, so that the customers of municipal light plants, and frankly, the customers who use electricity in the eastern part of the state, don't have to pay more for capacity than customers are paying for capacity elsewhere in the state.
So, while it's not directly a benefit to the Danvers ratepayers, at peak times, it will reduce our FFPNA wave. That is, so for people who don't, people, residents who may be watching, Danvers purchases power from a number of power sources, as a municipal light board itself, and that is based on consumption, we believe, what the standard consumption will be, what we believe, so we buy enough consumption. But when it gets to a point that the consumption exceeds, or the draw, the need exceeds what we get from our contracted providers, we have to pay market rate for the extra power that we're consuming. So, on an extremely hot day, if we use X amount of power above what we normally have contracted for, we have to buy that at market price. What I hear these gentlemen saying is, while it doesn't directly affect our ratepayers, the fact that the Peker plant will reduce the load on the entire system, it does, in a backwards way, benefit Danvers, because we don't have to pay a higher market rate during that small amount of time that we need extra power above what we've contracted to get.
I understand.
Okay. And I'm offering it not just for your understanding, but for citizens, there's a distinction. It's not going to help Danvers ratepayers on a day-to-day basis, it may when we have a capacity issue for that brief amount of period. And did I express that inaccurately, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment on batteries?
Yep.
So, a constituent sent me some information about batteries. In Oxxod, California, they said no to a gas Peker plant and yes to battery storage energy, which has provided the community with non-polluting power, increased the tax base, created good jobs, and better health for the people. That, but those batteries can virtually power Oxxod for four hours. But it takes 142 of these megapacks to get that power. You would fill up Liberty Tree Mall with these megapacks. So, but I think the future is there, because when you remember what the size of the first computer was and took up a whole room, so I think there's a future in battery, unfortunately, the future is not today.
And we certainly support batteries. Quite a few of the municipal light departments have batteries in their territory, and quite a few of the other general managers follow me at battery installations as we speak.
If I could just make a comment, I'm Pete Dino, the General Manager in Wakefield, and we actually have a battery. We also have two small support generators, and we're also part of this project. And the reality is that the future is a blended mix of all of those. We're not saying we don't believe in batteries, we're saying batteries have a definite role in the future, in addition to units like this as well. You know, again, they're not mutually exclusive, and the fact that they have batteries in Oxford, California, is just a piece of their puzzle, because like you said, after four hours, something else has to supply that resource. So, we're talking about having a whole set of resources. So, again, we have a battery in Wakefield, and on Tuesday night, it ran for an hour and 40 minutes at full load. But after an hour and 40 minutes, we were done with using the battery for the day, and now we had to, you know, make sure we had other resources.
It's the future. Thank you.
Can I ask a question to our Utility Director, David? Do we have batteries?
So, right now, Danvers does not have a local battery, like Wakefield does, Redding does, a number. We've researched it, and right now, in true Danvers fashion, we're watching how it works for those guys. And also, we all know we have a lot of space limitations, probably twice what they have. You know, Wakefield, they had a site, they could put one. So, right now, we're monitoring it, watching it go forward, and hopefully, in one of the next couple of technology curves, when either the price drops or they get smaller, that's when we see Danvers being able to get a local battery, which, the important thing is, those local batteries are, they're on the town side of the meter, per se, not regulated by, out on the regional grid like this one is, like this plant is proposed, big difference there. So, Danvers will also be looking at other utility scale batteries that are offered, that we could buy into, we'll be looking into those also, but don't have them right now.
Wonderful, thank you.
And gentleman, in case you know, this is David Lane, the Director of Public Works.
Yeah, again, Joe Koalik, General Manager in Marblehead. It's unfortunate that Representative Kearns has left the room, because the other, I know that this has been an economic argument for the last, or justification for the last 10 or 15 minutes. I also think, speaking directly to the people of Danvers, there's a reliability benefit that is very real. And just to give you an example of that, last week, we had that, 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 that was Monday to Wednesday warm days, we were, we, in Marblehead, we have a five-megawatt diesel plant that's from the 1970s. It was dispatched to run by ISO on Monday afternoon, and it, frankly, its emissions are 40% higher than this proposed plant. And I think everyone in Essex County, I mean, everyone in this NEMA zone, north of Boston Zone, which is all of Essex County, Middlesex County, Suffolk County, benefits from having more reliable, more modern, and lower emission plants to run reliably, not just during the predicted peaks, but also when other components in the system fail, and they do, and they go offline. So, what, part of what I see, sitting here from Marblehead, living in Essex County, is that this is a significant reliability benefit, not just for the people of Marblehead and the people of Peabody, but for everyone in Essex County, including the people of Danvers.
So, Joe and I were speaking earlier, and, I'm sorry, Joe and I were speaking earlier, and he actually did an analysis that said, in all likelihood, if 2015A was online, his diesel would not have run, and it would have, it would have, you know, you hear us talk about how this is actually going to clean up the environment, it's going to displace higher emitting resources, that would be a perfect example, that that would have been displaced and not run during that Monday to Wednesday period.
Thank you, Senator Lovely.
Yeah, I actually, I've got to leave shortly, the House and Senate are in formal sessions today, so...
So, this opportunity, I know I did say we were going to do it based on the presentation, but I'm going to offer Senator Lovely the opportunity to ask any question that she may have.
That's fine.
And then we lost the battery topic just quickly. So, we know that Massachusetts, the governor signed the legislation, passed the next generation roadmap, okay, so, 100% renewable by 2015. So, by 2050, that's what we're trying to get to, 100%.
Well, it's net zero.
Net zero, that's what I meant, net zero by 2050. What's the lifetime of this plant? I mean, you're still operating two other plants that are now 40 and 50 years old, right? So, what's the lifetime of this plant? What's the projection of taking the plants offline, since they're much older technology? And then I have a question about the air quality permits, I'm reading this, that 59-page document, and your permit is for 1,250 hours per 12-month period, but you're going to run it for 239, so it's limited to 250 hours per month? No. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm asking a question over here. Yeah, if you, I just need some clarity on that, because maybe I'm misunderstanding. I'm reading it, that says, you know, up to 1,250 hours?
The senator's asking if it's, if there's a limit per month to that total?
No, it's an annual limit of...
Of what?
1,000 hours, 1,000 hours on natural gas and 250 hours on oil, total of 1,250. No more, no more, let me rephrase that, no more than 250 hours on oil. If you run 1,250 hours on natural gas, you're not running anything on oil, 1,250 is it, but no more than 250 on oil.
You're going to run a total of just 239 hours per?
That is our conservative projection based on actual operating hours at Waters River, yes.
But you can run it up to 1,250, 250 on oil and 1,000?
That would be the max per our permit.
Right, so I just wanted to make that distinction, because I'm thinking 239 hours is what you can run, and you can run it four times that or three times that.
Certainly, yeah, it sends a conservative number, you heard Mr. Orfano spoke about that he, was it 74 hours, your unit ran last year?
Yes.
Oh, good. The 239 was actually, if he calls conservative, means aggressive.
Right, and so, what would the other, what would the other two plants, the other two plants burn as well, how many hours would they burn?
I don't know if you have that, the results.
Yes, we do have limits, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, but they've run, you know, the trend has been downward, as Matt mentioned, and right now, we have less than 40 hours operating time between the two units, so, they actually, about 40 on one and maybe 15 operating hours on the two.
And so...
But still significantly less, I mean, they're...
And what can, what can they run? Because, you know, NEMA, we know NEMA has a capacity problem, right, right here in our area, this is why you want to build a third plant, but you're not running the other two to their capacity?
Correct, so...
That would be correct, yeah, we do have, we do have operating shots posted down there, depending on which fuel source and depending on which unit is running. So, you know, we can run unit two for X amount of hours on natural gas, and if we're running unit one on oil with natural gas still running, it could run X amount of hours for a maximum during the day, that's all down there, the operators keep track of that any time the units run.
So, I still have a question, so are they running to their maximum capacity under your permit? Or if they're not, how much are they running, 50%?
Yeah, I think what your question is, the issue that we're, you're missing is that it's overlapping times, you can't run it twice as much in the same hours. So, if it's only needed for 75 hours, it runs for those 75, even if the max was 500, you can't double-run it during those 75, so that's the point. It needs, it's only run when it needs to be run, it's not run by choice, it's run when it's dispatched, and it can't double-run at the same time. So, if it only needed for 100, it can only run for, so it would be great if, you know, he could, he could run it 400 more hours, but it doesn't mean it's needed in those 400, it can only run when it's running.
So, why, that kind of makes my point, why the third plant then? If you're already filling the capacity, you don't need to hedge for another plant.
No, from PB's perspective, again, I can only speak from PB's perspective, as you mentioned, our two units, one of them is mid-'70s vintage, and we were looking or counting for the capacity of this new unit to eventually replace the capacity of our smaller, what we refer to as gas turbine number one. So, you know, because of the downward trend of less run hours, it's lasted a little longer than we've hoped, and we certainly, as long as, I tried to address that question before, as long as it remains, you know, reliable, safe, and economic for the ratepayers, we're going to continue to operate that. Now, whether that's two years, it definitely has a finite life, the mid-'70s vintage, so...
And the plant would be, once it gets to its end of its life, is to, not to take it offline, to actually renovate it or renew it, or?
No, right now, the gas turbine number one, we take that out of service, we just take it out of service. I mean, we would then need to look at the capacity that got provided, and how we're going to cover for that, because we have to cover for capacity, not only energy, so...
And how would you provide for that capacity?
Well, that's what we'd have to look, we'd have to look at the market, we'd have to look at the projections, but right now, it's, the 2015A is providing us a capacity hedge, which is a stable capacity price over the life of the project. So, that's what we believe.
Yeah, so I was just trying to get some clarity, what's going to happen to these two older plants? Are they, and right now, you don't know, you can't say, you'll take them down, they'll go out of service, or you'll renew them, or build something, another roof plant, or?
Right, it's all possible, it's in order to, you know, I have to purchase capacity for our customers, for our ratepayers, as well as Danvers has to, municipalities have to purchase capacity, it's one of the, you know, three components, transmission capacity and energy, so...
Just one, my last question, if I could.
Your floor shows.
Were there, were there other areas in the NEMA zone that you looked to place this, this Peker plant inside of Peabody?
Yes, the NEMA zone now includes south, the South Shore, as well as Rhode Island, that's the, that's that capacity zone that is import constrained. We looked at several other sites, two sites in Plymouth, we looked at a site in Fall River, and a site in the New Bedford area. And in all cases, we had greenfields that had to be disturbed, we had residences much closer than the Peabody site has. So, when we looked at the Peabody site, we had a fenced-in disturbed area, not a greenfield site, we had an industrial area, no nearby residences, and most, also, very importantly, we had the infrastructure, we didn't have to build a gas pipeline, we didn't have to bring in a transmission line, the infrastructure was all there. So, this was by far the site that had the least intrusiveness upon the environment in order to put a generating unit. So, that's why it was selected.
Thank you, I'm all set, thank you.
You're welcome, we appreciate your time, Senator, thank you for joining us today. So, if you have to get back to your work in Boston, feel free.
I have a question, Chairman. We talked about fossil fuels and renewables can displace the fossil fuels, they're saying, I've done some research, by 2050. Have we looked into with this plant any solar? We talked about battery, any solar panels to, you know, to help this? You know, naturally, we're all concerned about climate change and smog and everything, you know, wind, you know, anything, anything like that, has that been looked into by any chance?
Yes, so, similarly to 2015A, Emwick has announced what we call 2028, which is a seven-megawatt solar facility, which, hold me out here, I think five to seven municipal light departments are participating in that project. So, again, we're, we have, all of our energy components that we've looked at, at least since 2008, have all been renewable in nature.
Okay.
And just to add to that, you know, with all the offshore wind coming online, again, those are, those are energy facilities, you get very little capacity out of them, we're also looking at a combination of ownership and what they call PPAs, Power Purchase Agreements, with those offshore builders as well.
Right, because they would, because I was reading, and it said that if we could get wind and solar power to grow, it would push fossil fuels out of electricity sector by the mid-2030s, you know?
And that's exactly, that's exactly the point, so, when you make that separation between energy and capacity, if you're feeding that capacity revenue stream to these energy fossil fuel plants, you're keeping them around, you're keeping them in business, because they're getting a revenue stream. This is, is an attempt to remove that revenue stream, because if you didn't build 2015A, that revenue stream, because we have an obligation as load-serving entities, to purchase that capacity somewhere, where are you going to purchase that capacity from? Probably from these existing energy fossil fuel engine plants. Probably from these existing energy fossil fuel engine plants.
What are the, what are the megawatts provided by the current two plants there?
What's it, 40 and 16?
The winter rating is 20 megawatts on our gas turbine number one, that's mid-'70 vintage, and 40 megawatts on the gas turbine number two, which is a 1990 vintage.
So I'm going to ask a question that I, I think, I think I understand, but I'm going to ask it so that people can hear the answer. Suggesting that instead of this plant, we can increase the output of the other plants is not viable. The, when they're turned on, it's a light switch. The light switch is on or off. When this is turned on or the others, when 40-megawatt plan is on, it's at 40-megawatts. When we pull it down on the 2015A at 55, it's at 55. That's what it's producing because it's a snapshot in time of peak need. And so someone has asked the question, so I'm reframing it, that it's not, even though these two plants, when they run a capacity for a peak event, you said would produce less than the seven tons that are out there, it's not an option to say, run those more and forego this. It's that the need is now above the 60 you're able to provide. You have to have more. It would be 110. Is that accurate?
Yes, and ISO actually, we don't determine which unit gets turned on. ISO determines.
That was another question I was going to ask, is what is the prioritization and who determines that?
ISO New England does.
So will they actually say the need is only 40 watts, turn on plant number two or whatever it is?
Yes, and plus they're quick-starting. So because they're quick-starting units, you know, in a, in a really, quote-unquote, emergency, they'll ask those to be turned on as opposed to one of the bigger energy plants.
So would it, would it not be more environmentally sound for ISO to choose to kick in this 55-watt, even if they only need 40? Kick in the, the larger one for less emissions and more capacity at that point?
I think that will happen by default anyway because it, it kind of goes in a stack in terms of cost. So because this is the latest, what I call the latest and greatest equipment, it's more efficient, it's cheaper to run the 55-megawatt unit. So that will get selected first from ISO anyway.
Okay, so they'll decide it on an economic basis, not on an environmental basis?
Right.
They correlate.
Okay. In this case, they correlate. In all cases, do you feel they correlate?
It's energy efficiency.
Okay. Representative Kearns?
I guess I've just sat through the other presentation, this presentation, met with you, testified before the DPU with a number of questions. We're dancing around the, the conversation about what is referred to as environmental justice communities. You talked about, why did you choose Peabody? You chose Peabody because it already has this, because it's already burdened. So is that part of Danvers. So when you say, is it really just about cheaper? And even though it will mean a greater burden for our residents, our neighborhoods, Broad Street, all of those streets are going to have to now put up with this. But it's not really because that's the only way to get capacity. It's because it would be cheaper. And to Gardner's point, even if you could, or Jones' point, run 55, it's just, you seem very wedded to this site and it is, it ignores the whole message about environmental justice communities, that we just passed in a massive climate law.
So I, I don't think that's necess, well.
Sorry.
As I said, when you stepped out of the room, we kind of touched on that somewhat, even though, and Joe Koalak from Marblehead brought up his, his diesel unit. And I think, you know, when we met prior, we talked about displacement of, of units that emit more carbon. Joe has diesel that, in the capacity market. That was asked to run, was it last week? Monday through Wednesday. In all likelihood, that unit would not have run if 2015A was, was up and running. So the diesel units, as you know, are, are more carbon emitting than 2015A. So it would have displaced that. Similarly, and I, I can't give you a definitive, based on what we just talked about, the 55-megawatts running, in all, in all likelihood, if 2015A was up and running, the two units existing on the site now would not have been dispatched either. It, it's going to be a very rare occasion that all three, and I really shouldn't say that because you never know what the weather's going to be, that all three run at the same time. So because this is the latest and greatest technology, and it is on an economic dispatch scale, the 55-megawatt unit would run ahead of the two existing units on there. And so by default, it's cleaning up the environmental justice neighborhood.
So I did look ahead. You had one more stat, but I think we've discussed the topics of those last slides. So if you don't mind, we can just go to the open comments. And I did, Representative Kearns, you, you would invite her to offer any comments or questions you have in total.
Very large. I guess what has concerned me from the beginning, when I learned of this, largely through some community groups, including a group of folks in Peabody, is this balance of, do we add a third burden to it? I mean, how much should Danvers Port have to put up with? And, and that part of Peabody? Just how much does one neighborhood have to endure, especially when we could get that need met in another way? And so what has been missing, what I'm not hearing from EMWIC throughout, is this, that you're looking at balance. You seem very wedded to this site, even though it's more burden on Peabody, it's more burden on Danvers. You don't really need it. It will make things cheaper. We might save a cent on our kilowatt per hour price. But we're not balancing health needs and risks. We heard from the doctor, I don't know what your reaction might be, the physician from the North Shore Physicians Group at Mass General Danvers, who treats many people in our area with higher rates of asthma. And that is very likely, and I think our health director probably corroborates this, in part from the emissions from that plant. So yes, we could, we could get the capacity somewhere else, but first, there's an economic driver here. And I, my worry is that we're not balancing it with considerations of health and environmental integrity.
Again, I'd like to say, we certainly are taking that element into consideration. I, I just described how the, the unit, Marblehead, would probably not have run. The two units in, in, on the site right now probably would not have run because of the adding of this 55-megawatts, a cleaner unit than the three units I just described. So that would help the area because it's, it's going to be a cleaner unit. It's going to burn less carbon. So that is one of the considerations. If you look at EMWIC's history of what we've done, we've done everything renewable since day one. We sold our interest in Wyman, which was an energy fossil fuel plant. We replaced that with renewables. So now we had to replace the, the capacity. And this was, this was, it hit many touch points, and one of which is cleaning up the air as well. So I, I don't.
It would be even cleaner if you didn't build a new capacity.
I, I respectfully disagree with that.
Because that revenue stream for capacity, in all likelihood, will go to an energy fossil fuel plant, the big ones. The top of this, I don't know if it was six or seven, that's where we're going to be sending that revenue stream from, keeping that energy fossil fuel plant online.
Can I ask a question? So does it release more carbon dioxide into the air by adding this peak plant?
I'm sorry?
Will it release more carbon dioxide into the air too? Right, for the health concerns of, you know, climate change and everything like that? I mean, you're going to be having.
No, so it, it will, it will release less.
Less.
I don't know which slide shows it, 94%. Of all, of all the PEBITI units out there, this one, if you look at the middle bullet point?
Okay.
That basically illustrates how clean this 55-megawatt unit is.
And, and I can appreciate this. And I think one of the problems in communicating this is you're asking, you're asking citizens, just the general public who aren't involved in government and understand some of the speak, or in your profession and understand some of the speak and wording, to, to try to, try to understand or conceptualize that. However, if the argument was, on Monday and Tuesday, ISO New England required these four plants to start up because this wasn't available, and these four plants would have emitted X amount of tons. However, this plant would have relieved those four and only produced Y amount of tons, that's an argument I could understand and convey to the citizens, say, four plants, because this wasn't online, put in, I'm going to make up a number, 20 tons. This plant, had it been online, would have foregone those 20, 20 tons on those plants and only produced X amount of tons. I think you, I think the messaging has to pull it into a real-world example. My profession is project management, so I have to explain, you know, I have to try to convey these, you know, not just the, it's 94% of the old ones. Yes, the cars today are X percent cleaner than a 1972 Dodge Charger. Okay, but if you're going to tell me I have to transport people, this would be a real-world example of why you're, of conveying that this plant is actually, not economically, but environmentally sound because you've taken those four out of the mix. And I think that's the kind of, that's the kind of balancing we need to understand. It's not that you're adding seven tons. It's that the seven tons would displace so many other tons.
Select, select and trust.
And I think you're trying to say that, but you're saying it in a, in a manner that is, is based on your forest for the trees. You know power, power consumption, you know the state numbers, you know the federal numbers. But you, but to help me tell, you know, the Danvers residents, yes, there's a, actually a environmental impact benefit, I need to see that when Marblehead didn't start up, or when it did start up, it put out X amount of, you know, X amount of tons. If this had been online and that hadn't happened, you would have, the net, you would have been putting out less tonnage in, 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 in the aggregate.
Yeah, and at this point, that would be the theory. Until 2015A is built, there's real, no real world that I could point.
But you're offering models based on, you've offered many models that says 289 hours. You've offered models to say, this is what's going to happen with wind and noise and so on and so forth. It's not a, it's not far to think you could have a model that says.
If I could, part of the DPU testimony that was given, given the specifics we have on this plant, we know that with every megawatt generated, it's going, it is going to emit 1,200 pounds of greenhouse gases. That, we know that, and that's, it's in one of the slides here. That, as Ron said, that's a number. That number is, that number is 37% less than the average plant in the fleet right now. 37% less. Now, I'm going, and I do want to say that I think you're spot on. You know, I, in graduate school, I was a U.S. EPA Air Pollution Fellow. I have studied this, the difficulty of what we're trying to communicate frankly for decades. We are systematically trying to reduce greenhouse gases, systematically trying to reduce greenhouse gases. Everything we do is not a home run. This is not a home run, but it is a solid step in the right direction, in my opinion. It will reduce, from the average plant in the fleet today, 37% reduction. From the plant it's most likely to knock out, given that there's a correlation between energy efficiency and power costs, it will knock out the least efficient plants now in that fleet, which is a 70% reduction. That data is available in the DPU testimony.
The 37% reductions.
So the 37, the 37%.
I don't mean to be overly parochial, except I am.
You're a district representative. I understand, so.
But those benefits, those reductions will not occur over at the Peabody plant. When you talk about the fleet.
Well, they might, because this.
More broadly.
Well, so I think we need to, we, if, we really need to break this argument down into different categories. One is, you know, sort of statewide or ISO-wide, this clear environmental greenhouse gas reduction benefit, clear at the kind of regional scale. Then the question becomes, well, what about Peabody and what about Danvers Port? What does it mean to us? That's really, I think, what you're asking. And I think we're looking at the two, two factors. One is, look at the DEP report, which looks specifically at the neighborhoods in question. That's really the report to look at, because that speaks specifically to the neighborhoods. And, and in that case, we're in compliance with all those regulations.
Why not do a health assessment? Do the health assessment? Why not?
I can't speak to that. I'm speaking as the general manager, trying to move this project forward. But, but I would say, I, I don't think it was required under the law, Massachusetts. At a point I think I would make, is that to, to remove the, the notion that might exist that greenhouse gases, because our goal as a state is to be net zero by 2050, if you read the state's 2050 decarbonization pathways plan, which is published in December of 2020, you can get it from the Marblehead Municipal Light Department website, I encourage you to read it. Because in that, it clearly states that natural gas plants are going to be with us through 2050. They plan on it. And they plan on it as capacity resources. That's a, that's a hard pill for some people to swallow, but it's what's in the plan. What we're doing is putting a more efficient natural gas plant into the fleet. We will be reducing emissions in a plan the state says is going to exist for the next 30 years, by necessity, because in the energy market, everything is going renewable. So we're going offshore wind, you know, in a very large way. It's going to be intermittent. The need for reliability is going to increase, not decrease. And when you add to that, the state is intending to electrify both transportation and thermal heating. Our load could double or triple. So we're having new demands on the system. We're switching over to intermittent resources and we think everything is going to be hunky-dory. I'm concerned about reliability in Marblehead, Massachusetts, and that's why I'm here today. I think everyone in Essex County should be concerned about reliability. The good service we provide today, historically, is not a given going into the future. We need to plan for reliability as we also plan to reduce greenhouse gases.
I don't disagree, but I, I think too, battery technology is moving. It might not work today for Peabody, but in, over the life of 20 years.
EMWIC is managing six utility-scale batteries today. Managing on operating basis daily today. They're one of the leading operators of batteries in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They don't tell you that. Maybe they're not good marketers, but they're a leading organization for renewable energy.
And again, we, we talked about the fact that the batteries are a piece of the pie, but they don't solve the whole problem. They run for a limited scope of time. Last Tuesday, our battery was dead after three hours, but our load was up for seven, eight, nine hours that day. So they're not the complete solution. They're a piece of the puzzle, but they're not the solution. They, they have a finite useful life. And even if that technology advances over the next 10 years, it's still going to be a finite number. It's going to discharge, maybe it goes from four to five or four to six hours, but it's certainly not going to be open-ended as long as the weather is hot. So again, you're, you're running, you're running the batteries till you, till you run them out. And then you either have to recharge them in a period of time that you're already constrained or you don't have that resource anymore.
Representative Kearns, anything else?
I just hope that they do.
May I ask a question? Of, of the representatives?
Absolutely.
Earlier, you said, the investors in the plant, in one of, you said, and the investors in the plant. Do you think there are investors in this plant? There are no investors.
I'm not an investor-owned utility, I know that.
There, there are no investors in this plant.
I think either I misspoke or you misheard me because I am very clear that this is not an investor-owned facility.
Okay.
I'm crystal clear on that.
Good, I wanted to make sure, because you did use that term and I was like, wait a minute. This is not footprint. This is not a for profit.
Totally understood.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes.
Thank you. So obviously, we have three issues here. Reliability, capacity, and polluting the atmosphere with greenhouse gas emissions, with a goal to be in net zero by 2050. I suggest that's too late, but that's what's been proposed. There's really three camps out there with the climate change. There's the group that think it's a hoax. I don't think anybody in this room thinks that. There's a group that thinks the gradual reduction towards eliminating greenhouse emissions is okay. And there's the group that says it's past. is okay, and there's the group that says it's past time for action to eliminate fossil fuel burning plants. I kind of fall in between two and three. I understand the reliability, I understand the capacity, but if we keep saying yes to fossil fuel burning plants, we'll never get to net zero by 2050 or 2070. As, we don't control what goes on, you folks have more input, and I'm glad to hear that you're going in the direction. But I think with this project, you've done a good job today of downplaying the negative aspects. Noise is not at zero, pollution is not at zero, health issues are not eliminated, the ozone NOx is 2.5 something, your hours to run is an estimate, it's a theory. So you're proposing something that this neighborhood has to live with and absorb without any clear understanding of the ultimate effects on our atmosphere, our way of life. A very difficult project to present and sell. And I don't have an answer, if I had an answer, I'd be sitting someplace else. But frankly, it's another fossil fuel burning plant, and I'm not in favor of that. Thank you.
I'm going to open up to the selectmen after, with respect, I did ask the town manager to invite department heads to join us, and respecting that, again, we're citizen volunteers up here, we're not the experts in power, we're not the experts in sub, public safety, or health safety, so I did ask them to join us if they had their own questions and thoughts. But one of the questions, and I'll ask Deputy Chief, Brian Barry has joined us, is, again, harkening back to 2006, we experienced a catastrophic event in town, and from that have, the, our safety professionals have developed policies, procedures, response plans, other things that try to keep our citizens safe. And I just want to know that, you know, that, knowing that PBD is the primary community burdened by the actual physical plant that is there, the construction of the plants and so on and so forth, the utilities, I think there's value in understanding that this community on your border, literally owning more than half of Waters River and that neighborhood, can you, between the fire department, police department, director of public works, help us understand the safety protocols that are going to be initiated? Now, I heard that you eliminated one of the fuel tank proposals, so you currently have a fuel tank there, what's the containment, so on and so forth. How can we convince, how do we tell our citizens what you're doing will be, from a safety professional perspective, safe and, and secure? So I don't know if you want to offer questions, Deputy Chief, or if you.
Yeah, sure, I'll speak on that for a moment. Thank you. Hi, good morning, I'm Brian Barry, I'm a deputy chief on the Danvers Fire Department. Strictly through the chair, just from a public safety perspective, I reached out to Chuck Ofanos, who's manager of the PBD electric light plant, this week with some questions. And my goal was really to identify the current operations that exist today in PBD, and the changes that would occur should this project move forward. Once again, we do realize that this is in PBD, the primary response to any incident or significant incident would be PBD, but through the mutual aid support system and network, we certainly would play a role in that. So we want to make sure that we as emergency responders are prepared for that. So we, I, I talked to Chuck at length, and he gave me a, a lot of time, he offered a site visit, which I'm going to take him up on next week, to see how the plan operates today. And really, the hazards that I identified there are electricity, right? There's some scary stuff down there, and it's all throughout Danvers, but we have some level of experience, I wouldn't say comfort, but experience dealing with electrical emergencies. So they have transmission level power, distribution level power, they have transport formers on site. So, so that's one thing that could be an emergency incident on that site now and moving forward. They also have the high pressure natural gas line, the Tennessee Pipeline. We have experience, once again, not comfort, but experience with natural gas incidents, and we're fairly comfortable dealing with them. The diesel fuel tanks, also similar thing, we have experience with that, and we have knowledge, and we're prepared. The only real change that I see in, in the hazard that's, would be new with the new plant, with, with the new turbine, would be the introduction of the hydrogen. So my questions on that would be, I think Chuck, and if I misspeak, correct me, I, I think when the new turbine would go into operation, it could be, it would be able to operate a 10% hydrogen mix, is that accurate?
We're speaking with, it's very new technology, so we are speaking with a manufacturer, I quoted you a 10%, Brian, but we're, you know, that's not a hot firm number. We're being told there'd be some percentage in the beginning, likely to increase in the coming years, to, you know, to achieve more of a hydrogen and natural gas blend, to, again, ultimately lower emissions as much as possible.
Right, and that's great, because hydrogen obviously burns clean. So, so that would be it. So, so how would the hydrogen be transported to the site? How would it be stored? And how can we safely oversee that process? I guess that's really just my questions, and that's something that, in Danvers, I checked with my fire prevention officer, and we don't currently have hydrogen stored in Danvers in any capacity. In PBD, I do believe they have some in small capacities, but I'm assuming this would be a larger scale than anything we're accustomed to and used to, and that would be my question to the board and the members here, is, is how we could prepare for that, and, and as part of our emergency response plan, make sure that everybody involved, PBD and Danvers and anybody else who could potentially respond to an incident, I hope we never have to, but we have to prepare for the worst case scenario, as history has taught us. So how can we prepare? How can we make sure that we're comfortable, we have the education, training, and resources to deal with an incident, hydrogen related?
So I don't want to answer with your conversation, your fire department.
Uh, yes, thanks, Brian. Yes, so, Danvers' concern is the same as PBD. You know, this being a new technology, we've reached out to the chief, as well as the captain Dowling, who runs the inspection services, you know, they're, they are familiar with our substation, they have done emergency preparedness and familiarization with the hazards, as Brian explained. But with hydrogen, it, it's brand new, so the same concern. We, we spoke about, as we learn from the manufacturer of the turbine, again, if this project moves forward, as we learn through Pratt Whitney of the storage, the, the needs there, we're going to educate the local fire department, we'll work with Brian as well, and, yeah, we'll make sure that everybody is fully prepared in case an emergency was to happen, so.
Thank you.
To be clear, the, the transportation and the storage of hydrogen, as Chuck said, it's brand new, we're not there yet, we're still developing and exploring that. But if we can further reduce the emissions, green hydrogen is the way to go. The manufacturer does tell us that the equipment that, that we're purchasing is capable of doing some type of link. So if we're not there yet, we're still exploring that. So at the same time we're exploring that, we'll get the safety folks involved, make sure if any concerns they have are addressed as well.
And what I think I'm, I'm hearing is, and this is kind of, this is, the impetus of this meeting is extending invitation, extending data, extending, you know, communication to other communities. I'm hearing from our safety professionals, it's not a PBD issue, and I'm certain the PBD professionals are very good at what they do, and I have no doubt about that, but if it's a mutual aid situation, the other communities that support PBD in a mutual aid situation, Danvers being the closest, would want the same training, same understanding, same knowledge to keep our safety professionals safe, as well as, as well as the community. So I guess the takeaway is, it's not just working with PBD, it's working with expanding that sphere when it comes to the public safety part.
Right, and kind of what I meant by that.
Yes, and we, we've already started those conversations. Again, it's brand new, but we've already started those conversations.
Between PBD light, uh, uh, fire department and the Danvers light, that has happened, at least the fire team, PBD has indicated that Danvers would be involved in that conversation as well.
Anything else, Deputy Chief?
No, that's it, Chuck was very helpful yesterday, I want to thank him first time, he explained some of the current safety procedures in place, and I'm sure there will be just as many moving forward. It's, it's just a piece that we're not familiar with, with the hydrogen, and we just want to make sure that we're all comfortable with it and prepared long before it happens.
Yeah, that's very understandable, I just wanted to mention that all of your big power plants, everywhere, use hydrogen to cool their generators. For example, we have a hydrogen storage facility at our big power plant at our corporate headquarters at Ludlow. We store hydrogen at 2,000 PSI. It's been there for 30 years, the fire department is well versed on how to handle it. In this particular situation, where fire departments are not, do not have the experience or are concerned, we would make sure that the proper protocol would be followed, meaning the state fire marshal's office would get involved, you would go, you would, you would be utilizing safety protocol that would, that would have input from the state fire marshal's mar, office first, NFPA standards, the supplier of the hydrogen, and the insurance company. We would make sure every base was covered, just, just to let you know, we, the safety is our number one priority in operating power plants, above all things, is safety.
Public safety perspective, I appreciate it.
Thank you. We also have with us, and you've already met our health director today, so are you, do you have anything else? Okay, and our department, the director of department.
I might add, safety includes health.
Yes. And you also, David? Okay, those are the department heads. Mr. Town Manager, did you have anything else you want to offer?
I do not.
Then I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions, or anything they think they need to ask to help with their discussions with constituents. So Select Board Member Mills, do you have any questions, or?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I continue to request that the proponent agree to supply a resource so that the Danvers people can have an independent review of something that has been splendidly presented here by obviously talented people, who nevertheless have a vested interest in getting their project approved, and I have never seen a situation where good professionals coming together couldn't make some things tweaked and a little bit better. At least the people in my age group, who look to us to protect them from new technology, will be much more comfortable if there is an independent review of what I suspect is superbly prepared professional papers and documents, so that it won't be reinventing the wheel.
Thank you. Select Board Member Duggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a step in the right direction, towards getting to carbon neutral. It's taken us many years, I think, of not recognizing the climate change and global warming, so any steps that we can take to kind of get us to be in carbon neutral is a, is a benefit. Hopefully this plant will be, you know, work in a way that's not detrimental to the, to the neighbors. That's the really, safety is always number one from a, from a public official's perspective, and hopefully that you'll follow, not just the letter of the law, but maybe perhaps go above and beyond that. I just had a follow up question, because I just think I heard you say that you were going to use the hydrogen to cool the turbine, is that accurate?
We said that, that, in, in power plants, all your large power plants across New England, that is what the hydrogen is used for. We're going to use it for a different purpose, but I was just explaining that storing hydrogen at a power plant location is not new, okay? It's new to your area, because you don't have any large power plants around here. But all of your large power plants have a great deal of hydrogen stored on site.
Okay.
For other, for other purposes.
Sure, okay, I understand that. So a lot of power plants are, are located on the edge of either lakes, or the ocean, or rivers. You're not going to be drawing water from the Waters River to cool the turbine?
No, no, we'll, we'll be using a, a small amount of water from the, the city water supply.
City.
It's not, it's not a, you know, water cooled turbine per se.
Okay.
The water is used, used for lube oil cooling and for NOx control.
And that water is recycled? Or is it just?
No, no, not in the, this is a small, simple cycle unit, so no, it would not be.
Okay, all right, great, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
But to follow up on your question, the discharge is back through the PBD sewer system, correct?
Uh, we would have a holding tank on site for the water that's disposed, and it would be disposed of properly periodically.
Select Board Member Benard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I like that, I, that was one of my questions, Matt, about the water. I mean, it is a great idea, we want to, you know, technology, move forward. We talked about the cost being 85 million, right? And is there state or, or federal funding for any of this?
No.
Okay, and, you know, my concern is with our rep, you know, we've done the state environmental impact, why can't we do, you know, you know, the enviro impact done by the federal? You know, naturally, with a plant like this, it's reliability and low rates, but we also want to look at, this is the positive, what are the negatives? I'm concerned for safety and the health of our residents and the surrounding areas, you know, since we did have that tragedy here in Danvers, we don't want to have anything else. You know, we did, we did say that, I'm concerned about greenhouse gases too, with climate too, but some of the slides have pointed that, so I need more information, I need to read up a little bit more on this, but, you know, it is a good idea, but at what cost? And I like that environmental impact study to be done, so we can, you know, figure it out. Thank you.
Select Board Member Bennett.
Thank you, yes, I, I did reach out to Kate Roy with a direct question, if MIMRAC would agree to carbon neutral by 2040. The answer that I got really was no, that the carbon reduction goal is the same as the investor owned utilities, which is 2050. I find that troublesome, that we need to wait that long to get to net zero. At least at 2040, we might have a fighting chance to eliminate some of these heat waves, extreme weather changes, that are only going to get worse. So we're just kicking the can down the road, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, and it was in the paper, I, this is not a public hearing, so I, I solicited questions from the public. I have a couple that just haven't been answered through the course of the discussion, so some are going to be anticlimactic, but I want to ask them for the, for the benefit of the residents. You did tell us it was going to be one tower, 90 feet high, there's only going to be one tower, correct? There's no opportunity for a second tower. For those of you who are watching, they're saying, yes, that's correct. And a couple of questions that I did send ahead of time, so you can be prepared. You did answer, you know, the plan development, technology has evolved, and are any of your plans presented in 2015 a plan changing based on advancements in technologies? I'm hearing, actually, I heard one, which is the potential of hydrogen as a, to, as a cleaning agent for, to make more efficient, are there other changes based on the advancement technologies, since you proposed this and filed for it, that you're going to be offering?
Okay, let, just look at the, the history of, of the development of this project. This is a simple cycle aerod derivative gas turbine, which is basically the same turbine that you would find under the wing of an aircraft. The only difference is, is driving a generator.
Okay.
Okay, there hasn't been any appreciable advances in gas turbine technology since we embarked on this project. Secondly, is emissions controls. This project was under the scrutiny of the Massachusetts DEP for best available controlled technology until September of last year. We just got our air permit last year, less, nine months ago, which means that the final review of the technology that we're using for emissions control was just approved in September of 2020. So that's current, that's not six years old. So I, I just want to put everything in the proper perspective.
No, that's helpful, I understand.
As far as hydrogen is concerned, that's an emerging technology, it's not to increase efficiency, it's to eliminate, reduce, and eventually eliminate greenhouse gases.
Great, thank you. You did talk about the impact, you talked about the comprehensive health impact studies, the environmental studies that you did do, and you've heard the request that we, there would be a comfort level if you did a broader environmental impact study to be determined. What wetland studies happened? Did the Concom have to, and my concern is, I did not realize till I looked at a map, I drew up, I draw, pulled up a map at the June 22nd, and Danvers actually owns more than half of Waters, Waters River. It, it extends, the border of Danvers extends very close to the shoreline, so obviously there's wetlands at that point. So obviously, there's wetlands at that point. What wetland impact studies may have been done, and has the PBD Concom weighed in?
Yes. The first thing we did in the development of this project is we did a wetlands delineation associated with the site. And what that looks at, it looks at shorelines, it looks at wetlands. Then, associated with the wetlands, it looks at the 100-foot buffer. Associated with the shoreline, it looks at the 200-foot buffer. And all of that was looked at, it was delineated, and we found that a corner of the wetlands buffer touched the site, okay? So our next step was to go to the PBD Conservation Commission to seek guidance on how to proceed forward, typically with a NIT, a Notice of Intent. And when we did, the administrator at the PBD Conservation Commission was very familiar with this kind of work. And the first thing that was said is, "You do not need an NIT." Why? Because the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Regulation concerning this clearly states that if it is an electrical or gas facility within a fenced-in area that's previously disturbed, and you're adding new equipment, like equipment, you don't have to go through the NIT process. This was told to us by the PBD Conservation Commission, okay? Because we fully intended to go forward with an NIT. So we looked at that, the regulation's very clear, and then we ran that by our environmental consultant. They agreed. And so this was, delineation was done. We're not in a wetland, we're just, a corner of the buffer, 100-foot buffer touches the site, and this is, this is where we are.
Great. The state rep is asking for, could you just tell us the regulation? She didn't hear.
It's 310, oh God, I have it written down. Hold on. I can, I can read it to you, as a matter of fact, and give it to you. It's...
NIT, I'm sorry, what does that stand for?
Notice of Intent.
Oh, and no...
It's sometimes referred to as NOI.
No, NTI, no, NOI, NOI, I'm sorry, NOI. I got the acronym wrong. Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought that you were going to the conservation, to PBD.
We did. We did.
We'll find it, but it just says that no Notice of Intent required as long as the project is for a gas, or...
Let me, let me, first, I'll give you the reg. If you want to write it down, I'll give it to you slowly. It's 310, CMR, 10.02, parentheses 2, parentheses B, as in boy, parentheses 1, parentheses K, as in king. Okay, I'll read, I'll read exactly what it says. That's exempt, and quote-unquote, "from the regulation." "The installation of new equipment within an existing electric or gas facilities, when such equipment is contained entirely within the developed slash disturbed fenced yard." That is one of the exemptions. And that was pointed out to us by the PBD Conservation Commission.
So if I might follow up. Equipment, we pretty much all would understand, but this, obviously, is this going to be housed in an existing building?
No, this is a generator. Everybody refers to it as a plant. It's a generator.
Okay, so it's a standalone, I don't want to say, in my world, an appliance?
Yes.
It's a, okay, all right. It's not a building, you're not gonna be breaking ground for it, you're not gonna be, you will be obviously piping in the gas connections and so on and so forth, but it's nothing, it's not housed in a building, no one's gonna, it just has a smokestack associated with the generator?
Yes, it's a standalone piece of equipment.
Okay. And that helps put it in context for people who don't understand, and, you know, I didn't either until now.
There's no additional staff associated with it, a little house self-containment.
Okay. So again, you may do yourself a favor of having an artist rendition or something, so people can wrap their heads around it, about what this is. You all know what it is. People fresh to this don't. So that might be helpful as well. So that reframes some of the questions that people have asked. I've asked all the questions, I've gotten the answers to all the questions I had forwarded to you, or were asked by citizens. So I'm done. Last comments from our state rep? Anything you'd like to say before we close up today?
I'm just, I'm still hoping that some of what you've heard, we've heard a lot from you, I'm hoping that some of what you've heard in terms of concerns will lead you to decide that you will do a comprehensive health impact assessment and a full environmental review. I appreciate my Select Board Member and lifelong friend David's suggestion that you pay for an independent analysis. Respectfully, I would urge that just do the environmental impact statement overview study. That is a, it's a gold standard. Just, I don't know why you wouldn't do it. And that, I think, would provide assurance to people that this is the best that can be done, that the only way to get capacity needs met is to build this third peaker in an already overburdened environmental justice community. So that's my plea.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for attending. Select Board Members, anything else you'd like to finish up with? Again, I want to thank you all for participating and educating the town about what the project is, providing some information for the citizens to digest. And I think you've heard the takeaways, and I think we're pretty much done. So Kate Roy was here, she didn't get to speak, so thank you very much for organizing this, and to the town department heads and the town manager for having the, having us hosted here. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck driving, Ben.